I'd like to get your attention. Time to call a meeting to order, if you would. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We do have, obviously, a nice crowd here tonight. We do have, for the crowd, we have the next thing on the agenda is public comments, so that may be where we want to fit you in. Because we do have a pretty long meeting. If we don't get you in here, you'll go to the end. And we do have two public hearings and lots of other business to take care of. So I'm going to ask you if you have a spokesman, that's fine. And what you'll do is come to whoever is going to speak, come up. And everybody's welcome to speak. We certainly always hope that we don't have the same thing said 50 times. So whoever your spokesman is, if they like this, if you have one, come up to the podium and introduce yourself. It is recorded, so we want your name and address. And then you go ahead and give us what you'd like to discuss.
Okay, thank you, Senator. My name is Roger Gibb, and I am from Mason, Ohio, 5155 Farm Ridge Way. I'm not from your township, but what I have to say to you today does, if it pertains to your township and to the benefit of the whole state of Ohio. So the Gallup Poll organization does a survey every year. And one of the questions that they ask people is what their biggest problems are that they face. For seven of the past 10 years, Americans named the government as one of their biggest problems. I, for one, consider the federal government to be a massive problem. We're now $35 trillion in debt, and for the first time in history, the interest on the debt has been $1 trillion in one year. The federal government is intentionally causing the immigration problem that we're facing right now. Millions of illegal immigrants in our country. Congress, you have many people in Congress who've been there for 20, 30, 40 years, and the corruption is obvious. The inflation that we've all been suffering through recently, that's all courtesy of the federal government and their reckless spending. And so, put simply, the federal government is off the rails at our expense. Now, it's one thing to identify a problem. It's a completely different thing to offer a solution to the problem, and I'm here to do just that. The Ohio House of Representatives is considering passing House Joint Resolution 3. This is a resolution that, to request an Article 5 Convention of States to propose amendments to the U.S. Constitution. And those amendments would fall under three categories. First is fiscal responsibility, so think about a budget amendment. Second is term limits on Congress, on U.S. Congress. And the third is limiting the power and jurisdiction of the federal government. Article 5 of the Constitution allows for state legislatures to propose amendments to the Constitution, and it was specifically designed for times like right now, when the federal government, when the Congress itself refuses to propose amendments that it knows the people want. Congress knows we want a balanced budget amendment. Congress knows that we want term limits on Congress. They refuse to do it because they're off the rails. And that is why we need to call an Article 5 Convention. That's why the Ohio Legislature is considering moving forward with this. So for your awareness, six other townships or municipalities in Warren County have passed resolutions just like this. Deerfield Township, Hamilton Township, the Village of Corwin, the Village of Waynesville, Wayne Township, Franklin Township, and we have a verbal agreement from Turtle Creek. They may have passed it already, I'm not sure. Turtle Creek wants to pass it. And so I'm providing for you tonight some material. This is a map of the others of the states that have passed resolutions for this very thing. The states shaded in green, there are 19 of them, have all passed resolutions calling for an Article 5 Convention, as I described. This is House Joint Resolution 3, which is under consideration in the General Assembly this time. And so what we are inviting you to do today is to consider passing your own non-binding resolution that requests that Senators Steve Wilson and Representative Scott Lips that they support this effort at the State House to make Ohio the 20th state to support this effort to rein in the federal government for we, the people. So do you have any questions I could answer?
No, I appreciate you, we all appreciate you bringing this information to us. It's certainly something that we will take better advice and consider.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Very good.
Go, go.
Thank you.
Senator Steve Wilson.
Senator Steve Wilson?
Yeah, I think you said Sue.
Oh, did I?
Yeah.
Oh, that's why I got it. Senator Steve Wilson.
I'm Gary Beaver, I'm from Mason, at 3687 Oakmount Court. I'm here also for the support, the board's most support for the Convention of States. We're asking, as Roger said previously, that you consider passing that resolution. A similar resolution would be presented also by Senator Steve Wilson in the center. Roger, I already explained that there are six municipalities that already support this. That represents 45% of the population of Warren County. So I'm just going to go into just a little more detail of those things that Roger talked about, fiscal responsibility, term limits on Congress and federal employees, and limiting the power and the jurisdiction of the federal government. Here are some examples of the amendments that could be passed by an Article 5 Convention of States. A balanced budget amendment with taxation tax. Nearly all 50 states in the United States have passed balanced budget amendments that require them to be legally responsible throughout their terms. 75% of Americans support a balanced budget amendment. Term limits on Congress. A century ago, the Congress passed term limits on the presidency of the United States. It's time that they pass, it's time that we get an amendment that makes them equal to the choice of the people and stop this lifetime representation in Congress. One subject, one bill. We know that a lot of times there are bills that are presented that have port barrel type issues in there that just get passed without any true merits. By having one bill being passed with one topic, then that bill would have to pass on its own merits. And then people could, our representatives could vote a little bit better on passing those bills. Also, the federal and state government doesn't always work together on immigration. For example, California has, excuse me, Texas and some of the border states don't have the authority that they need to control immigration in the borders. So if you get some cooperation between an amendment that require the federal government to cooperate with the states, we would have better control of our southern borders. The portion of House Representatives and citizens. Some of the states, in the last census, when the census was taken, immigrants that were not citizens of the United States were counted in that census. So that changed the representation in states like California, where they got more representatives in Congress, because the immigration, non-citizens were counted. An amendment to require that citizens be a part of the census only would help us to better represent the citizens of the United States. Can you imagine that if a fraction of these amendments that I've spoken about were passed, how much that would change and better our government? We're asking you to consider passing a likewise resolution so that we can get better control of our government. Your committee, and many committees in the townships throughout the state of Ohio, will be better represented if we take some action and require the federal government to actually honor the will of the people. And I hope that you will consider a resolution that would ask our representatives to properly represent the will of the people. Do you have any questions?
No.
Thank you very much.
I'm the township trustee for 10 years. That's my speech. My name is Michael Burrows, 8,000 Chick Within Lane, Cincinnati, Ohio. I have only been involved a few months, but common sense. We know that our forefathers did a wonderful job. They gave us the Constitution. They gave us the three branches of government. Just for the people. I would stress to you, the states are representing people. In 300 years almost, we've never exercised Article 5. I'm here on behalf of the Convention of States. I would like very much for you all to say and to vote and to give us this non-committal letter to people that are opposed to it. There are people that are opposed to it. Why? Why would anybody be opposed to it? Well, I think the answer is Article 5 does not have details. Does not have who's going to be the delegates. Does not have where they're going to meet. You know, there's a, you know, but I believe that even if the governor of California became a governor, who I would not like, that the other 34 states would appoint people that are rational, can work it out, and have a better Article 5 amendment. There's only passed 27 in almost 300 years. I think 250 have been proposed. I am a mortgage loan officer of 59 years. I'm 81 years old. My job is to make sure I don't put somebody in bankruptcy. I have to tell them the facts of life. You do not qualify for a loan. 26 years ago, I started my own company. Roger is with Procter &amp; Gamble. I can't tell you how many P&amp;G guys, because that's my client. I don't want people that don't pay their bills. Because you know what happens? It destroys their families when they file bankruptcy. Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, we are on the brink of financial disaster.
Let's address the board.
I believe that our military is so strong, we'll never be overtaken by another country. But you destroy the value of a dollar, you may have a revolution. Nobody wants that. Any questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Good evening.
My name is Sean Ward, and I live at 5498 Spring Blossom Drive. And I'm asking you for help in regards to the sound level that is coming from Hidden Valley, Georgia. Now, the sound level is just absolutely ridiculously loud. The bass is in my house Friday and Saturday. I hear it from 6:30 to 9:30, and then some Saturdays when they have a band from 1:00 to 4:00. And then again, from 6:30 to 9:30, when they have another band on Fri-, or Saturdays. I hear it Friday, I hear it Saturday, I get no peace and quiet. I'm asking for some sort of noise ordinance, some sort of quality of life clause, something like that, to help the surrounding neighborhoods essentially have a better quality of life. And I would like to give a quick example of what happened last Friday, when they had a band called Bridges Down. So 6:10 rolls around, I have to call the non-emergency line because I feel it in my bedroom, I feel it in my daughter's bedroom, feel it in my office, every single corner of my house, I felt the bass. And I heard the music in my bedroom, and then rolls, 8:10 rolls around, I have to start bedtime with a 5-and-a-half-year-old. Bedtime, there's no music, no nothing. We read books. And my 5-and-a-half-year-old, Daddy, what is that? Like, that's the bass. I can't control it, I'm sorry. We get to book four, and I call the non-emergency line again. I say, can you go ask them to turn it down, please? I get it, there's no noise ordinance, I don't think anything came of it. And then, my daughter is a fantastic sleeper. She went to bed screaming about 9:35 when the band finally stopped. And so I come to you as a dad that is set up, and hopefully something can be done with the noise across the street. And I know there's a lot more people here that also are affected by it, and so.
I'm Linda Ross, I wasn't planning to speak today. My address is 8081 Simpson Creek Way, Mason, Ohio. I just wanted to explain quickly that the process for our Convention of States is that all 34 states have to agree to have a Convention of States. And once that happens, each state sends around six delegates to convention. They come up with the amendments that they want to propose, then it goes back to the states, and three fourths of the states have to pass those individual amendments, one at a time. So there are people who object to it, who say that there's going to be a runaway convention or that there's going to be unintended consequences. And, you know, with three fourths of the people having to vote on it, that's just not going to happen. And the other thing about unintended consequences, well, the consequences of not doing anything are a lot worse. That's just my one thing. Thank you.
My name is Rhonda Hale. I live at 621 Vicki's Report. I'm here just to express the noise that we've been also having from Hidden Valley, Georgia. Bands that they have been getting in. It's just not last Friday, it's every weekend that they are open. They're getting these bands, and the noise is just unbelievably loud. Even walking my dog and talking to my neighbor, I'm kind of screaming to even get to where we can't even understand each other. I'm in my house, door shut, windows shut, in the shower, and can still hear the music, like I was just right there next door with them. So our backyards are kind of draining. And it's, we've called the police many times to have them feel or turn it down. If they do, it's for five minutes, when the police are gone, it's right back up. Or they don't even do it at all. So our complaint is just the noise, and if we could get some kind of ordinance that for our township, that'd be very much appreciated. Thank you.
I think it's pretty obvious that everybody's here because of the noise out there. Anything else that you'd like us to consider and talk about?
Can I add something to that, please?
My name is Charles Sweet. I live at 653 Sock's Report. We've been dealing with the same issue for about five years now. I think what we're asking is that there be some kind of the desupreating that goes along with it, something that's enforceable, something bad. Or we give it, this is the level that's set across the township, that exempts farming, rural, we're talking about concert fees, but we're not talking about farm machinery. And I think that's been an issue in the past. So that's what we're asking for, that's just that there be some kind of consideration. For all of us, it's been a long five years, and we would like some relief. We did not hear it on our homes. We've put in special windows and stuff to him class, and we still hear it. And there's really no consideration from Hidden Valley that we need to. So we're coming to you and asking for your help. So that's it. Thank you.
Chris Hale. All right, from Sock's Report. I just want to clear up something about the census. They said that non-citizens are being counted in the census. But that's part of the plan, that's how it works. And I'm sure we all know that. That it counts for everybody. So they know how to divide out residents. And that includes specifically immigrants. Okay? That's all.
Thank you. Okay, do you guys have any questions? I'm going to ask a counselor. Obviously, we have an issue out there for us. And we don't have ordinances, right ordinances. But in this type of situation, we'll have to go through the process in order to consider getting something onto books. And that has to start with the zoning commission. With the zoning commission. However, we could certainly hand this board initiative something with the zoning commission. You could ask them to take it up. Ask them to take it up, they'll investigate it. Come up with a recommendation, come back to you also.
This would be similar to a press.
Yeah, exactly.
The way, yeah, back there. So let's pursue that.
Yeah, definitely something needs to be done. I haven't been out there, I haven't been in any of your homes, but I certainly know it's noisy.
Use the grad pair, well folks, because we went through that already and had to go to them and say, to your point, Mr. Sweet, the one area we have one ordinance, another area we have another. It goes by where you live, whether you have an HLA or not, and those sort of things. So it has to have parameters to it.
We will initiate that. So what I'm hearing the board is, for next meeting, we'll have a resolution to initiate the process. Does the zoning board meet before that?
No, no, we need it to begin in a month, so. You have direction. Still have some.
We're going, be close, maybe not in two weeks, but certainly after that. But we'll get something started and get to work on it. Well, I would caution, this is not going to make me popular, but you have to be careful about these noise resolutions in terms of decibel levels. And I will tell you that ambient decibel level is 40 to 45, sometimes as high as 50. And so decibel levels, and how you enforce, and who hears it when, and how you prosecute these, they're not that easy. I have a number of jurisdictions where these issues are difficult, and they can be, and are also constitutional issues again. I've got to worry about what this board does to make sure this board doesn't violate other folks' rights as well. So it's a Jenga piece, if you pull one, it's fine, and then the rest of the house comes down. So we need, as you're pointing out, we need investigation processes, and we'll look at what could be done in the past.
I would make sort of a wedding, I don't exactly know what you're talking about.
Right, so you've got to make sure that you're doing things right, of course, so. We'll initiate the action. We'll get a resolution to do it the right way, then we can enforce it. We'll get that in front of you next week, or next year, if our duty is there.
I could also maybe suggest, in the meantime, posting a letter or some communication officially, letting Hidden Valley know that they probably would like to have neighbors that consider them good neighbors. And if that's not the case, we're going to do everything we can to satisfy our community.
Anybody have anything else they'd like to bring up? Yes, ma'am.
Very involved, 5525, Hidden Valley. We were here last year about the noise, but also about the traffic. And I suppose you're all aware that best planning could do an expansion of Hidden Valley, but maintain this concert and the traffic, and we don't seem to be getting anywhere to preserve our neighborhood. All we hear is, they were there first. Although, they weren't there first in the way they are now, in the manner they are now. And they're going to expand. So I think quality of life issues, you could do anything like that. But the traffic is horrendous. You cannot get out of our streets, and what they've proposed is to make that just in one way. But if you're coming up from the south, north, and you want to make a left in Hunter's, it's Spring Valley, I'm sorry, Spring Blossom, you can't see the cars coming south until you're right on top of the hill. And if you've got people flying from both ways to get into Hidden Valley, it's a disaster. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ray, just so the board's aware, it's not your responsibility under the resolution to deal with what happened Tuesday night with respect to the agricultural site plan. That's not your role, that's not your jurisdiction, that's what the DZA. One of the conditions recommended by Mr. Palmer, as implemented by Chief Agnewrod and Chief Terrell, was for ODOT to come in and take a look at that, do a traffic study. So those issues are going to be addressed through ODOT satisfaction. So just so the board is clear, that issue is being addressed with respect to traffic. And it'll be ODOT's recommendation, because it's ODOT's state road. So it's ODOT's jurisdiction, and because of Chief Agnewrod and Chief Terrell and Mr. Palmer's good work, at first, the applicants said, we're not doing that. And because of their persistence, and then contacting ODOT, now at least, ODOT's coming in to do a traffic study, and they have to follow it, and that's a condition of the approval. So, you know, in this case, staff did an excellent job and got ODOT detention based on the, on the, not only the concerns they have, but also the concerns expressed by the citizens, and those have now been impressed in a condition of approval. And possibly do improvements there. And to pay, and to pay for the improvements that are recommended by ODOT. That is a condition of the approval of the site. Also, they're going to finally do these speed studies. That's true. Which we've tried for years. Which ODOT would not do.
What happened, yeah.
Right? So, again, I say that.
Which is what we spoke about all year ago as well.
I say that because having, you know, again, I'm just a lawyer, so I don't have a dog in the fight, so to speak. I'm just telling you, watching what happened with Chief and what staff have done, you got a lot more accomplished than what was going on previously. Yeah. No, so we're moving in a good direction for that with ODOT. If you all remember, a person had to deal with ODOT. You know, they really didn't pay attention such much. Just to get this traffic light out here, we had to have, I can't remember the number of accidents and injuries that had to be before they were put traffic lights. And deaths. And deaths. We had to have deaths before they put traffic light out. But they're not easy to deal with, and they do even more us often. But we'll keep working with them, and it started, so thanks to our staff that's pushed them in, and they're finally paying attention. Appreciate that. Okay, well, we're going to move on to our special activities, which means we're going to have a couple of public hearings. You're all welcome to stay, or you're certainly welcome to leave. Thank you all. Okay. No further public comments, but we're going to ask you to reset regular meetings and open up the public hearing to address resolutions. Mr. Metersburg.
Hey, Mr. Gabbard.
Yeah, Mr. Wade.
Yeah. All right, so the purpose of the first public hearing is to consider parcel 041510008 from Pickford, Franklin, Wood Road, 7 changes plus concern residential SR1 to mixed-use community development in U.C. With that, I'll tell you where some things are and what's going on.
Hey, Walden.
Your head looks fantastic.
Chief didn't tell you which way to sit for the public hearing, so. So we're on Wood Road, Pickford, Franklin. This is the parcel attached to the hearing, 575. Current zoning request is to actually try to abate a current zoning violation on the property. So the property is currently storing virtual vehicles on the property, going residential, that's beyond the expectation of home occupation and the current use. So the request is to go through a review process to allow the continued use of existing sites for storage, family system structure, and then list additional potential uses for future developments. So this is, clicks over, we'll have a site plan, updated concept plan. And we have several different hatches on the property. We have a single hatch, which is this rough handle. We then have a double hatch just here, polygon. We'll get to those in just a moment. Looking at the area, again, we're looking at the, some requirements for PUDs, show area and geography, this is the parcel, which I can assume that you can. There we go. The delay is amazing sometimes, so if you're thinking we have to go on. Uh, existing on the property is currently a structure, some old, um, I use the word term old, existing agricultural, still building on the property. Um, so we have several photos showing what is existing, which is the property in mind. There we go. All right. So going second elevation. And then third elevation, same structure. So the request is an update to the initial application. And with the update, there is a clarification, some effective uses for the site. So some of the potential future uses in addition to the existing. Single families, dwellings, home occupation, needed to buy a house, until household goods, public goods, operated parks, model homes, and accessory buildings. Those are all existing permitted uses in the SR one classification. Then to add a religious institution, until communication towers out of a conditional status to a permitted status of the SR one. Private storage garage, accessory activity within residential. And then the limousine service, which is a prohibited use in SR one, but allowing it to be two permitted use. Warehousing, which is only for cars, limousines, passenger vehicles, vans, those RVs, which are E two permitted use. And I'm sorry, building structures temporary or permanent for structures in the E two. Then the other request is for other residential or non-residential use, which is of a general character and a class of resident and non-residential permitted above, but not otherwise defined by the, defined by the zoning resolution, determined by the Pickford Township's name. Lots of things, ultimately, what they're after is this. Um, the list that existed prior to this was several pages. Uh, every use that could exist and some of what they've done with the revampment, this should bring it down to a PUD or residential uses, it means it's a state that the, as we're getting through the concept plan, the residential area could have and the mixed use area could have. And these are non-residential uses. The non-residential uses are focusing on the storage and the current use that exists today, um, in violation for storage on the site. So wanting to basically have what you see is what you get type of planning development, which typically, um, we started looking for zoning violations, if that's something legitimate in the area, it's a, it exists within the area, um, with a PUD. So we'll get to that in just a moment. Let's look at some of the current zoning classifications. Uh, so the north, we have an MR PUD, which is non-residential planning development. I mean, it's strictly a commercial planning development, it's for the store and lock facility. That was approved in August of twenty twenty-two. We have residential, we have residential across the interstate, um, in the city of Springbrough. We have from the south, SR one and R one in Pickford Township. And then to the west, you have R one B, which is in Franklin Township. We look at the land use plan. The location is outside of a sewer area, according to map four. Northern four. It's on the urban collector according to the map six for the classification. And then it's in planning area one, but then the planning areas of map ten, which specifies substantially developed or characters been established for that area. And then we look at the land use plan. Calls to be this urban residential classification of the buffer zone. Ultimately, we're looking at the two thousand and five land use plan and discussion about commercial expansion, and looking to exist the desire to maintain world character, encourage commercial growth that was equal to the market, encourage cluster type commercial areas in the waiting spot zone. Look at the concept plan, a little bit of greater detail, and just maybe answer some questions you have about use and activities. So the overall area, mixed use, so a commercial classification and a residential classification. Within that, they specify that they're always going to have a two point eight eight acre with approximately two hundred and twenty-five feet of road frames. This is always going to be a residential component, probably. The five point three seven gross acre, the other polygon, is always going to be a mixed use, but within that, it's a coercion, or non-residential activity and residential activity to occur. At this point in time, there's a request, um, before you, that does not specify where the open space is, but they are required to have two point one nine net acres of open space. Also, for a driveway, it's not shown off, it's claimed to have a reduction in acreage. Existing use on the site, um, is basically a driveway gravel area. The gravel area has been expanded, it's not shown on this, um, site plan, it has expanded to east along with the structure. So with the existing structure, part of the area and driveway, currently there's point ninety acres of impervious or non-bakeding, um, space. With the present expansion, the structure went up to six thousand five hundred fifty-two square feet, um, as shown. Again, with future activities, it's a balance of, okay, if you want existing to continue, that's plan A. If you want plan B to be, if we ever come back and want additional uses, how do we deal with those? Currently, for suburban residential is the baseline zone classification that the zoning commission looked at and ultimately the resolution details. So you'd have acre lot minimum, unless you have sanitary connection, you'd have two acre lot, no, two, she pointed out, two acres. Half acres for some reason, it just goes on and down. So the density could exist at six lots, um, if it develops as a straight classification or thirteen as sanitary. So, coming, coming back to what you see is what you get, even though the PUD process for other jurisdictions collapses, stage one, stage two, and stage three, and you don't have a modification, ours does not. So definitely, we're required to go through a stage two, which is a public site plan review, primary site plan review activity, and we'll go through a stage three, even though the desire is just in the use, what you can see today on the site. Although, any of the other uses, such as, for example, telecommunications tower was approved in the site, we'll have to come back for a stage two and a stage three process. So there is a check and balance in future bureaucratic process, so it must go through if you don't see what's, um, today, if you decided to change today's view, has to go forward with the PUD. So with that being said, just for, for original planning, they initially recommended denial based upon the perications that the applicant has now made to make the zoning commission and the, for the, they approved. Also, there was missing problems of the application, was the, all the expectations for the car cycling minimums, plus all the different uses could exist. Also, when the application was updated and brought before the zoning commission, they liked what they saw, um, based upon the location, a property being between this existing PUD and church use, both those being non-residential in use. They believed that that expansion was not spot zoning, it was continuation of character in the area. And the neighbors at that point in time, and the neighborhood's saying, you know, came out in support, and there was letters that were printed, a packet of neighbors encouraging this use to continue on the site. So you have before you this evening, resolution fifty-five forty, which is taking what the zoning commission heard, putting it into format for approval of eleven conditions. If there's any additional conditions based upon destiny of the city that you want to have, or things that you feel need to be added to the site during hours of operations, all the standards or other concerns, that would be something that would be added, um, in the majority of, in the slide to get the. With that, I'd probably confuse more than help based upon, um, look, so I'll answer questions.
Do you have, it's probably right here in front of me, the, the conditions that they have asked for. Have those.
Yeah, so the conditions are resolution fifty-five forty. I can give you a copy of those.
And bringing up on the board. You're saying they're storing commercial vehicles there now?
Yeah, so the applicant has a limousine business, um, a party being, which can be more of a justice explaining the activity. Uh, they basically have vehicles that are sitting there, has its storage location, he's not running his business from the site, so to speak, but boys do come to the site, pick up a vehicle, drop off their vehicle, give a performance service, come back and do the thing reverse.
And those are all stored inside the barn?
Uh, some are stored outside of the barn, and then Peyton's down inside the barn, he can say, and mounted inside versus outside. Uh, we've documented it to be outside the barn.
And how many of those vehicles?
Awesome question, but I don't know the answer to you. I know there was at least three, um, that we witnessed, you know.
I think sometimes when I drive by there, I can see one vehicle outside, but sometimes three or four. Or more than one, for sure. Except for, pretty far, that's, that's a fair distance off of the road, but you can definitely see vehicles setting right there, I don't know about that. I don't know that they're particularly offensive to me, but I'm not looking at them every day either. Okay, so they're requesting to have a, um, an MU mixed use PUD, which will allow them to put up to six four twelve, six oh one, upper main with sewer. Residential have lots in there. As well as continue the classification that's on this map.
Correct. Those were, be all future, uh, at this point in time, the stage one, you're saying these are a list of uses that are appropriate, and then you go through a stage two, it's all probably to be allocated on the site.
Right.
Okay. Let's see that.
What kind of screen?
The planning commission did end up approving.
Yes, so one, for one kind of regional planning, they recommended denial based upon missing information, and they thought that truly there was not enough of a demand in the nation. That's been allowed the output, so they need to cut, you know, pause and go forward to where things happen. So in that process, they revamped the community request. And through that, they were fine, I guess is a better word to say. So uses were taken out, all the potential uses that they had, and these are the ones that are most important first. And you went, updated the site plan, so it shows what you have received, and then you went before the zoning commission. The zoning commission looked at it based upon their year in the testimony that was brought forth, that even positive from the neighbors, that it could, it seems to be something that could fit within the area, since we allowed the store and lock in the north, um, be similar to the use. So that's all we got to do to accomplish. Even though those are the land use plans, these are one of the, play specific discussion.
Do you have, is there a representative here for the applicant?
Yes, sir.
I think it's just not, might be appropriate if we were. Yes, sir. Do you want to state your name, please?
Thank you. My name is David Montgomery, the crocheter in that William twenty-seven hundred, scratch cash tower, Dayton, Ohio, four five four two three. Uh, with me tonight is Orville Wright, who is the owner of the property, is doing one of his, uh, entities. Um, just, I don't want to go through all the detail that you guys just heard, but I do want to add just a little bit of, you know, some color to it, if you will. So when we first came, uh, to Jeff, uh, and Jeff did correct that it was a zoning violation that prompted us to, to do this, but to Orville's credit, he wanted to come in and he wanted to do it right, and he wanted to be able to continue the use that was of the property. And so one of the things that Jeff and I talked about was, hey, I've looked at, uh, me, I've looked at the zoning history of the, this property, uh, in twenty or twenty-two, and gone to a rezoning. And one of the big concerns that came out of that, uh, and that rezoning was for a B two use. And, and this body may very well remember, you know, one of the big things that came out of that was just, we do straight B two, there's not a lot of control about what goes in and how we manage that, because it's a straight zoning district. And so when we started to look at this in a little more detail, he thought that it made sense to do the mixed use PUD. So the MU PUD application, uh, is really where that came from. Uh, the store and lock had already been approved, so we did have a true commercial or non-residential PUD directly adjacent to us, and then we had a conditional use, which was the church on the backside. Um, seventy-five is obviously on the backside border, I should say the downside, on the backside border is seventy-five. And really, the fact of the matter is, this property has never developed as a residential, right? I mean, we've had this agricultural structure on it. Um, it has been marketed, Orville bought the property, Orville's not using the property for residential, and with the commercial to the north, I'm just not so sure if this property, to be honest with you, would really ever develop as residential. And so by doing this, what we've tried to do is, we've tried to, and Jeff spoke to this, but we did try to capture the underlying zoning, the SR one zoning. We did eliminate some of the more intensive uses that are permitted under the SR one zoning, such as hospitals, retirement homes, universities, much more intensive uses, but they're conditional uses, and they would be subject to re, to, to entertainment by the township. And so we've tried to narrow everything really specific to what Orville's use is, which is this limousine service warehousing, uh, and then still allowing the property to develop all as residential. So we're not trying to limit the residential development, and if some developer comes along and says, this is a great nine acre piece, and I can put in thirteen homes, you know, with sewer or six homes without, that opportunity still remains. We don't think that that is necessarily the market sector for this, but we want to be able to keep the township ability to have that, should a developer want to come in and do it. And so what we've tried to do with the site plan is, as you can see, I mean, it's, it's sort of an as-built site plan, right? So it's a little bit different than this year average, you know, a piece of farmland or whatever the case may be. But we've tried to protect pure residential, uh, up along, uh, the wood road, um, there, along the front edge, with the two hundred and fifty plus or minus, uh, lineal feet. And then we've tried to keep, obviously, the business use or the non-residential use for the existing structure, and then pushing everything back towards seventy-five. So the idea is, from an intensity standpoint, it's more or less, it is what it is, where it is, and then anything that would develop in a more intensive area would be farther back. The, the buffers that we've created are in excess of what is required under the SR one zoning, so we have created larger buffer zones. And our intent would be, while it's not marked on this concept plan, but you would see it if we get to phase two and phase three, is that those buffer areas would be no build zones, so they're true setbacks. And when you bring that into the calculation, I think it comes out to two point oh eight or two point oh nine, so we're one tenth of an acre off of what, you know, code we require. Um, but outside of that, I mean, a tenth or a hundredth of an acre makes a big difference if you're able to find, to find a way to adjust that. But, um, but, but, but really, that would be, you know, we're protecting the borders, there's a heavy tree line between us and the, uh, us and the, uh, the, uh, commercial to the north. And, and really, one of the important things about this is, there is no staff on site. We don't have an office, so there's no, you know, employee there twenty-four, seven, or seven days or five days a week, whatever the case may be. It is truly a situation where the vehicles are stored. Sometimes they're brought out for washing or, you know, getting ready, if you will, for, to, to go on runs. And as Jeff mentioned during his report, you know, a driver comes in, parts his car, goes inside or retrieves one of the limousine vehicles, and then comes out and goes on a run. And then nothing happens until the next driver comes. So the intensity of the use is, I mean, arguably much less than a standard residential, uh, certainly much more than a standard residential subdivision, because you truly, and, and Orville can speak to this, to the number of vehicles that he has, but it's not a massive fleet. I mean, this isn't, you know, something that you see out of, you know, movies or anything. But, but there was, but, but, you know, in honesty, you know, there are a couple cars, so I don't want to make it sound like it's a single limousine car. But, um, what, we, we've also added a check and balance to this, and that is that we've maximized the, uh, commercial, or we've capped, I should say, the commercial square footage within the entirety of the development at ten thousand square feet. So we've asked for the ability, and I think you can see it on, it's hard to see, but you can see it on that site plan. There's actually a footprint that would show any extension of that building. We've asked to be able to expand that building by fifty percent. That expansion is towards seventy-five, so it's not invasive towards any of the residential. And then the idea is, is with that expansion, and with this ten thousand square foot cap, it leaves thirteen hundred square feet plus or minus for an auxiliary building. So we have really tried to go through some significant efforts to, I hate to say hamstring, but I mean, really confine the intensity of any commercial development that would take place on this property. And then the idea, of course, was that, while we did take several conditional uses within the S R one, through the P U D process, as Jeff talked about, any of that stuff is going to have to come back through zoning board and this board. So you guys will have multiple bites of the apple to direct that however you want. With that, I don't know, Orville, if you have anything to add, or, I mean, if you have questions for us, we're happy to do it. But, like I said, I'll try to keep it short and sweet for you.
I'm good, I don't have any questions.
Okay, okay.
Anybody from the audience like to make a comment? Yes, sir?
Yeah, I'm Don Williams, I live exactly across the street from the ninety-eight ninety-seventh Clear Creek Franklin Road. I'm all in favor for his business there. I've seen two cars parked out next to him. It's not bad, he does a good job, and I appreciate someone like that doing a good job there. But it doesn't get the people we don't want.
So I got his name and address.
John Stafford, ninety-nine eighty-eight West Union Avenue. I'm the, I'm the property to the north, and I often have no objection bill every once in a while.
Any further comments? Okay, I'd like to have a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting. Someone?
Sir?
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Mearsfall?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion to approve or deny fifty-five forty?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Okay, we do have a second public hearing, and at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to reset the regular meeting. Mr. Mearsfall?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Wade? And I should have said, open the second public hearing.
Orville, is that a mission? No, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Resolution to five forty?
Please, sir, appreciate it.
Resolution to approve or deny the zoning request of Jeff Roddigan, running in, straight forward to the county.
Yeah, appreciate it.
And the pre-association, L E D, and G C G, and pre-association's L E D. And to amend the owners of any pre-association to nine point eight acres. Okay, Jeff, read.
All right, so, to bring you up back to where we're at, we're at the intersection of State Route, relocated, State Route one twenty-three, one twenty-two, Redline Blackburn Road. And this is part of nine point eight, three two three acres tract, so it's part of a twenty point three six, two four acre area, which is in the final, this blue polygon. So when the original parcel was greater than the twenty acres, when we entered the roam from that State Route one twenty-three, so it's greater than two parcels, it was meaning that it was a single parcel, but then had it sliced each way. So as part of this process, if the sale goes through, based upon zoning discussion this evening, then that would depend its own parcel by survey, and another parcel by survey. So, looking at that survey here, of the next exhibit. So the request is for the ten point eight, this is first for the two, the nine point eight, listed the ten point four parcel discussion. This property has this rectangular configuration based upon the two thousand and five land use plan, where we anticipated having commercial being that area. But, the property was actually rezoned in two thousand and five to O S R one, because at that point in time, it presumed all properties to at least a residential new classification, and left all future commercial to the property to come forth for a zoning change request. This is the first zoning change request, even though that property was purchased in two thousand and five in anticipation of the land use plan. So, slow time coming, but we're getting it. Ultimately, the request was to go to a B two classification, general business, with the applicant's warning to establish a storing lock. And this drawing will show that, for the property. So storing lock, B two use, therefore, it's a B two request. Request is for straight classifications, goes to the last classification of this work P U D. Look at the land use, to turn around the area, the zoning classification. To the east and to the south, we have O S R one. To the west, we have B two, to the north, we have R one, S R two, B one, and B two. So a residential classification, two different commercial classifications. And we look at the two thousand and five land use plan, this area is within the one county sewer area. It's also then located on a collector, so a rural designation. And it's an area, Plan Eight, which was a small rural crossroads hamlet of Redline, small scale, in which ultimately, we didn't update in two thousand and seventeen, to the moment. But, all right, it's there, and jump ahead, map eleven. It's going to show that the area is really tiny. We're even at map twelve, so we're looking a little bit clearer. And zoom, you can see that this area has designation that was both commercial and village area for Redline. So as I alluded to before, this is part of that polygon that was extended out through business mode, so to speak, of one twenty-two. Now been subdivided by the road realignment, which did not occur as planned, exactly in that location, but was brought out, split occur. So it had a commercial and a village designation when it went to two thousand and seventeen Redline plan. Map five shows it conceptually to be a mixed use within the town center discussion for Redline. Map eight. Two. It's going to show it to have a split classification of both commercial and mixed use. So, commercial within the red area, and mixed use within the brown area. The commercial nodes is a district that creates strong sense of place, makes a small, medium retail, that continues to develop along one twenty-two. Mixed use neighborhood was a small scale, mixed use commercial combination, low impact commercial, office, upper street residential. At that time, there's discussion about having standards established for the Redline area for architectural review, building materials, and having destination oriented interfaces, speaking of being a good interface. Ultimately, that was started as a resolution for discussion with the zoning commission, but we paused that based upon all the sanitary discussion that has been placed on hold. So, even though it's within the sanitary area, we expect those uses to occur until more movement is made at the county level, we have what we have. So, we look at the updated thoroughfare, that shows that the green, what's this? I can't see it. You're right, she could. Here we go, there we go. So, everything green is then a secondary material. So it's two different classification change, but that new intersection parcel, this is still where we're looking, split by. So, this one before one county regional planning, and they recommended to approve, zoning change request from O S R one to B two general business, this before the zoning commission. They recommend to approve the request, even though no one came and spoke against it. I wonder, the applicant came to speak for it, they still thought this is a good idea, there was no opposition. Both Plan, the master land use plan in two thousand and five, and the two thousand and seventeen Hunter Redline area plan, both showed that area had some level of commercial to exist in there. And they thought that that was appropriate, at least for the classification. With that, any questions, uh, trustees?
Do you have any questions? Do we ask the pictures of what it's going to look like?
Yeah. There's a conceptual about what things would be. So if I go back to their second drawing, which will come up in a minute. Showing the southern boundary of the property, their first phase, which they would have, structure to purchase this. I'm not going to go into greater detail about the size and the use, those types of things. As a B two, it could be this use, as it could be every other listed B two use. And they came in to say they want to do storing locks, as their primary use on the site. Some discussion about potential to the future, to the north, maybe something else, but it's long stick off, you know, it's storing lock use. But as a B two, I cannot hold them to disputes, and that's just what they're requesting, it's not a plan you can have.
So when it gets to that point, then we would have a say, approval or denial, what would go in there based on the appearance and?
As currently requested, no. This is a request just for a straight classification. If you wanted to have control aesthetically and more site planery controlled, then it would be a P U D that you would desire to have disposed through straight classification. This would just stay on the top of my desk for review. So we call the minimums for, setting resolution for parking light and access. Make sure that they have whatever sanitary they need to have. And we look at the structures to require setbacks, so it would be straightforward now.
You say, ask them here at the top of the desk?
Yes. Mr. He's in the back. Yeah, but he has a presentation.
Is there any questions for Jeff, if you have that? If you would, move forward and tell us what you want to do.
Sure. My name is Jeff Roddigan, you pronounce it perfectly, Mr. Wade, thank you. Great, yeah, I want to be as transparent with you all as possible. I've got ten slides, and if there's no questions, I might get through them in ten minutes, so I appreciate your time this evening. So, what I'm going to talk about is who we are, straightforward storage, what our vision is, what we'd like to do, if we're successful with zoning. Why did we choose Redline? Why do we think B two zoning makes sense? And then I'll talk a little bit about what our plans are to go and develop the parcel. Um, oop, double hit, I wasn't patient enough. There we go. So who are we? So, we're a, we're a group of four business partners, and three of us are here. So two of my partners, in addition to me.
I think they're trying to find the phone that they left behind.
Oh, boy.
Oh, wow, okay. So, Tom and Eric Bulling, two of my business partners, are with me. So, the key thing here, I won't bore you with these shells, but all four of us are, you know, decades and decades long residents of southwest Ohio. All four of us have been in commercial, real estate investing in southwest Ohio for decades. And, and so, you know, that's a little bit about, about who we are. We're not, we're not a hedge fund, we're not a big corporate, you know, developer. And we are qualified, I'm going to go back and say one more thing about that. We are qualified investors, so there's rules, if you do like real estate syndication, there's certain parameters you have to meet. So we're all qualified investors for that definition, and we are experienced commercial developers. All right, our vision, the only thing we want to do with this parcel is self-storage. If we, if we can't build self-storage on this parcel, then we will not go through with our contract to purchase the parcel. So we have no interest in doing any other type of commercial development, other than self-storage. It is a, it's proven to be a fast-growing sector of the commercial real estate industry, and over the last twenty years, it's proved to be a very durable business, through the ups and downs of the economy, and serves a broad spectrum of people and businesses. Why Redline? Why Clear Creek Township? Why Redline? So, we engaged at a considerable expense a nationally known storage consultant to look across the four counties in southwest Ohio, Butler, Hamilton, Warren, Claremont, and choose, help us to pinpoint areas of unmet demand for self-storage. And generally, most of your business comes within a four mile radius, so it's a very local business. And Redline was pinpointed as the epicenter of an underserved sub-market, separate and distinct from Springboro, Middletown, and Lebanon. So that's why we're here. Our partners, so, you know, if I was going to build McDonald's, which I have no interest in doing, and I will never do, but I wouldn't have to decide what my logo would look like, I wouldn't have to decide what my, I would not have to decide what my menu looks like. I wouldn't have to hire a consultant to, I wouldn't have to figure out where do I post store, to have analytics that tell them where to post store. I, I wouldn't have to figure out how to staff it. So that's kind of what we're doing, right? So we've got a team, we've engaged four different consultants, Storage One-on-One, the Storage Ninja, nationally known, Extra Space Storage, which is a national leader in this business, and Trappy, which is a well-known manufacturer in building these type of structures. We worked with Joe Schusler, who maybe you've heard of, he's at Warren County, Small Business Development. We have Tom Schumakers here, our general contractor from Cincinnati Commercial Contracting, and third-party, Extra Space Storage does consulting and third-party management. So we're not going to try to figure out how to manage ourselves, we're going to ask some experts to manage that business. And then I mentioned Trappy, and the construction side of it. But it's kind of our bigger ecosystem of our team. So, why, why should you consider approving B two zoning? What benefits are there, how does it align with the twenty seventeen Hunter Redline plan? Self-storage is a relatively low intensity use. So some of the things that are in the plan are not needed. It's, we're ready as is, you know, we don't need the sidewalks or crosswalks, sanitary sewer service is not needed. As far as I can tell, there's no existing Redline business that we would compete with or approach upon, that are within that, you know, four mile radius. In the Hunter Redline plan, it says that one of the things is that the plan wants to encourage business establishments in centralized locations along major roadways that serve the needs of the community. So, we feel like we fit that bill. You know, reading the Hunter Redline plan, they're ambitious plans, and it's a well-written document, thorough, ambitious. But, you know, here we are, almost twenty, twenty twenty-five, and it feels like there needs to be a catalyst. And so maybe we could be part of jump-starting that business development. It would definitely attract some notice and awareness, I mean, we would invest seven figures in this community. It would enable the creation of a destination business. It would add some scale and depth to that commercial district as it sits today. It would definitely increase land value and tax revenue. And it would provide a service which our analytics have shown is in demand to serve nearby residents and businesses. These are a few quotes from some kind of, you know, people that have a web or social media presence who write about self-storage. There's, there's almost, there's somewhere between twenty-five and thirty million self-storage units in the United States. I just read today that eleven percent of households in the U.S. use self-stored. So there's just incredible demand. But, what's the impact on, you know, what's the impact of a self-storage business to a community like Clear Creek Township? We really don't use significant electrical, gas, oil, water, sewer, or other resources. So the fact that the water and sewer infrastructure isn't there, we can, we can work with that. Low traffic generation, only about twenty-five percent of users visit the facility monthly. So, when we were in front of the zoning commission, which I understand is appointed by all of you, right, one gentleman raised concern about the traffic in that area at certain times of day. So, you know, we would not contribute to that, you know. If, if the Hunter Redline plan happens, and then maybe things need to happen with those arteries there, but it's not going to be because of us. You know, we would definitely pay, pay, pay share of taxes, but we wouldn't create additional demands on. but we wouldn't create additional demands on some of the things like schools, police and fire departments. Um, the next article talked about that self-storage can be surprisingly beneficial for some communities, that they're quiet places, uh, unlike the people that we heard here before. Um, just a, you know, a handful of visitors each day, they're secure, they're kept extremely clean. Um, we would build modern, high-end self-storage, primarily climate-controlled. We might do a hundred percent climate-control, which is kind of the higher end of the market. New facilities of self-storage have architectural designs that are aesthetically pleasing as any commercial building going up there. So we, we care about that, right? Because it's part of the brand image. We're going to be, if, if you have stuff that's valuable and you need to put it in a climate-controlled unit, the way the facility looks and the way it's run, you need to reflect that. Um, also, um, often self-storage businesses will reach out to the community with all the relationships with schools, charitable organizations, volunteer storage space for good causes. We want to be a good neighbor and good corporate citizen if we're here. A couple of pictures, just to give you some ideas, right? So I talked about that we want to do modern self-storage. So when you talk about modern self-storage, think pavement, not gravel. Think, um, you know, modern lighting systems and security, think landscaping. So the picture on the top is, um, an extra-space facility, so that's our management partner. And you can see what they've done with their office. It looks like a residential home. And you can see the colors, the color scheme they have, a gray and a light green. That's kind of their brand, right? So, um, you know, they're increasingly designed to be compatible with the surrounding areas and with mixed-use development. Um, and then, uh, the, the lower picture is an example of mixed-use, um, with self-storage. So you've got some storage in the back. Oh.
Oh.
Yeah.
Thank you. Hey, what sort of view do you have?
I feel a lot better now that I've taken care of. The picture on the bottom is, um, you've got some retail in the front. So, you know, it could be a, uh, you know, it could be a beauty parlor, it could be a dry cleaner, you know, it could be whatever. In that case, one of them's a car wash. Then you've got self-storage in the back. So, um, increasingly, self-storage units have to live within, um, other types of development to be compatible. All right, this is a, this is not a final plan, this is a conceptual plan. Um, you know, we're probably going to build out forty-five to fifty thousand rentable square feet, you know, if, if we're successful. And so that's roughly what that would look like. It'd be paved in in-between, plenty of room to turn around. Um, and the top of this picture is obviously one twenty-two on the north, and then one twenty-three on the east. Um, on the south side, we'll have to have retention ponds, right, for stormwater runoff. So we, we're thinking eleven, that would sit on the south end of the lot. Um, you know, we have almost ten acres here. We're, we're not going to need it all. We're not sure what we're going to need exactly, but it's probably going to be in the order of five to six acres. Now, if we're successful tonight, we will give our consultant a green light to finalize their feasibility study, and that'll allow us to finalize our, our design. Um, so then what would happen with another, you know, acreage? Well, if we're successful and we build it and it rents off, we might expand. I, I don't see us expanding use all that land. But if the Hunter Red Lion Plan starts to come along, you know, that property closest to one twenty-two, then we, we're not interested in developing it. But it could be subdivided and we can buy it and sell it to another developer under the same usage at that point. So I just wanted to give you an idea. I'm sorry, was I a question?
Do you have any questions at this time?
Um, so I just wanted to conceptually give you an idea of what it was, what am I going to require. And that, that also allows for the ingress egress to happen, not on one twenty-two, but away from it where it'd be less pressure on the traffic. Um, this timeline is aggressive, it might not be doable. Um, but you can see that if we're, if we're successful in zoning, we'll quickly go into finalizing, uh, our assessment and our design, and then we'll pivot into financing and permitting, and we'll break ground as soon as we can get through those things. So we're very serious about doing this. We're serious about doing it as quickly as we can move. Um, and, uh, and so we don't plan to get this zoning and sit in the land and try to flip it to somebody or something like that. So gentlemen, that, that is my final slide, and I would be glad to entertain any questions, if you like.
I don't have any questions. Somebody have any questions?
All right, thank you.
Jeff, do you have any more comments?
Yes, sir, I was just going to grab them. I can answer questions if you have, but I have nothing else prepared.
Okay. Yeah, well, I think they're all together. Any guys have any, anybody else have any comments?
It's part of our position.
All right, at this time, I'd like to have a motion to close the public hearing.
Second, Mr. Mearsfall.
Yeah.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yeah.
Mr. Wade.
Yeah.
Back into a regular session. Is there a motion to approve or deny Resolution Fifty-Five Forty-One?
I'll move to approve.
Second. Mr. Mearsfall.
Yeah.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yeah.
Mr. Wade.
Yeah.
All good. Now, what's, that's thirty days?
Yeah, so thirty days from now, this is the oral representation. Since the referendum, thirty days, but technical, will be there. Got questions?
Yeah, can I speak just for one minute? I, I didn't want to say this before I presented it because I didn't want to seem like I was speaking in favor, but, uh, I just want to tell you that as a, uh, I'm not a resident of Clear Creek Township as an outsider coming in here to do business. I just want to tell you, you probably already know this, but Jeff Palmer has been exceptionally, he's exceptional. He's, uh, he's always, always responds in a timely fashion. He's very punctual. He, uh, has absolute command of his, uh, stuff that he does, and he's a real asset. And so the, to the degree, so he gives me a favorable opinion of Clear Creek Township that I didn't have before. So the, to the degree that, uh, you all evaluate the employees of the township and reward them, I recommend that you top him out.
Just don't hire him.
Thank you for saying that. And, and we are very aware of that, and we're very lucky in all of our departments in that, in that fashion. We try not to let everybody know it. We don't want, we don't want to burden it out too much, but, uh, we're, we're very lucky. We really are.
Yes, you are. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
There's always one to hit that way.
Yeah, over get your phone. We left this place up.
We got a place to store now, though.
Yeah.
We're still on page one.
We are in the board.
That's kind of cooked the chicken pot pot. They've got it good. They did absolutely good.
Okay. Anything else under special activities?
I have nothing else for special activities, sir.
Thank God.
I hear that yourself later, but this time, I don't have no problem.
All right, let's see how fast we can get through this. Uh, the first one is supplemental appropriations for three particular areas. I have a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars I need to add to transfer to the fund. That's specifically used for, to allow me to authorize the transfer of interest income for police, fire, and the other funds that we normally do. I have to do this and this for, um, because I underestimated how much money we'd actually make in interest this year. So we did good, so we need to have that additional authority to be able to transfer that money. The second one is, uh, three thousand one hundred ninety-nine for the ARF funds. We had some, uh, incumbents and some POs that were created in twenty-three that we ended up not using all the money for that. So we want to make sure that we spent every single dollar of that. So we're appropriating that money for that purpose, so that we can spend them last if we have the money, we will not have any dilemma with that. The last thing is five thousand dollars of detracted services for, uh, twenty-four oh-one that is lighting assessment fund. Um, we experienced a significant increase in the costs, so we, I need, even though I estimated a certain amount, I need another five thousand to get that down. So that is, the board's actually at this time.
Okay. I think we probably really need three moments here.
No, one, one, one will do it. It's a single resolution.
It's a form of resolution, so. Okay. Anybody have any questions for us? All right, is there a motion to approve Fifty-Five Forty-Two?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yeah.
Mr. Mearsfall.
Yeah.
Mr. Wade.
Yeah.
And then part two of this is the ability to transfer the money. Now that you pass that, now I can legally transfer the money for that. So you have nine forty-six.
That's Mr. Mearsfall's fault.
No, that's all right. No worries, I just didn't have it out. And so this, this one is for two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars total. We've got the breakdown that you had down in front of you as to which fund they're actually going to. Part of our normal business and ready for your action at this time.
If I have any questions about Fifty-Five Forty-Six? Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Mearsfall.
Yeah.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yeah.
Mr. Wade.
Yeah.
Anything else, Russ?
Nope, sir, that's it for me, thank you.
Okay, moving on to new business administration. We have Fifty-Five Resident Fifty-Five Forty-Three.
So after the board vote in August pertaining to the annexation request on the seventeen forty-one in front of the high school, the school property over there engaged with the city to come up with a typical annexation agreement according to the devised code, which we did, it's very straightforward, it's in the packet, and there's no trails to it. It's a few pages long. Specifically, I identified the property and I have a request at hand. So I'm going to agree with the resolution for your gratification today and don't want to get confused with the other annexation requests that were just the board. I did not care for. This is the one that you didn't vote for.
The, uh, any questions about Fifty-Five Forty-Three? Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Mr. Gabbard.
Yeah.
Mr. Mearsfall.
Yeah.
Mr. Wade.
Yeah.
And then we have Resolution Fifty-Five Forty-Three.
Yeah, it's a resolution for the very personal property surplus, approving the dis- uh, dislocation of it. I can dispense with the second reading. One is a twenty-eight hundred dollar trailer, which we intend to trade in on a purchase by resolution a little further at the beginning, and to donate the end-of-life SCBA units the fire district has to the American Rescue Center to help with their fire training program. Glad to answer your question.
Any questions for Matt? Is there a motion to approve Fifty-Five Forty-Four?
Second. Second. Mr. Mearsfall.
Yeah.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yeah.
Mr. Wade.
Yeah.
And then we have Fifty-Five Forty-Five, a resolution depicting a portion of Clear Creek Township's share of funds from the American Rescue Plan Act to fund site improvements and purchase equipments we've spent for the second reading.
Now, to Russ's point five to go, we're going to spend every penny of the ARF money, and there's just a little bit left. And, uh, Ryan, his credit is raised at a number of different times. He gets a pretty good equipment and pretty good infrastructure, which should help the township. In this particular request, he's asking for seventy-three hundred and seventy-eight dollars to do the electric and the light one. And he is asking to trade in the surplus trailer from the prior resolution for a new axle-under trailer that would be used to, to pipes out to different sites to be able to do that trailer, the PJ trailer that they have now, which is a used net trailer. It actually has fenders that come up over the bed of the actual trailer bed itself. But the new trailer would allow him to actually pull off the pipes when he's on site. So he wouldn't have to deal with the exterior.
Any questions about Fifty-Five Forty-Five? Is there a motion to approve?
Second. Mr. Gabbard.
Yeah.
Mr. Mearsfall.
Yeah.
Mr. Wade.
Yeah.
And we have Fifty-Five Forty-Seven. No Forty-Six?
Forty-Six was in Russ's business.
Fifty-Five Forty-Seven, a resolution authorized the council to trade in for obligation greater than ten thousand dollars.
I can dispense with the second reading. Declared emergency, these are the two Health and Heroes contracts, one for the fire district, both for the police department that were part of our collective bargaining agreements earlier this year. Uh, they are a component of the wellness program, which has been very well-received and very, very well-utilized, I might add, by the police department. And it's a multi-year contract that exceeds my overall authority, fifty-six years together. So I ask for the board's approval to execute those agreements by the resolution.
So a motion to approve Fifty-Five Forty-Seven?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Mearsfall.
Yeah.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yeah.
Mr. Wade.
Yeah.
Anything else at this time, Matt?
Not at this time.
Okay, moving on to the fire district, that resolution of Fifty-Five Forty-Eight, a resolution approving the memorandum of understanding lying between the board of Clear Creek Township trustees and International Association of Firefighters, forty-two oh-seven.
I can, sure. Um, this is cleaning up some contractual language that actually, uh, clarifies what our longstanding practice has been with respect to calculating overtime versus what is considered active pay status. We have always treated daytime off as active pay status for the purpose of calculating overtime. However, the contract has residual language in it from generations ago that had a contradictory statement in it. And by the memorandum of understanding, we wish to clarify that with the current collective bargaining agreement in the MOU will expire with the collective bargaining agreement at the end of twenty-twenty-six. So we have, setting that aside for this particular language does not preclude us from bargaining that particular, we probably, again, simply clarifies the practice.
Any questions about Fifty-Five Forty-Eight? Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Mr. Gabbard.
Yeah.
Mr. Mearsfall.
Yeah.
Mr. Wade.
Yeah.
And we have a recommendation authorized a promotional process for the position of captain due to impending resignation.
Yeah, with the recent resignation of captain, well, he took a, took the fire chief's job with the Montevalley Fire District since he was over there. I'm worried that we need an opportunity to do a package.
Is there a motion to approve this process?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Mearsfall.
Yeah.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yeah.
Mr. Wade.
Yeah.
Anything else, Chief?
Just a quick update on Station Twenty-four. We've got today, they're moving right along, we're still on schedule. We hope to be under roof by the end of the month. So then, we're finishing with the same site, and hopefully we'll be done with the building in the January, operating first quarter next year.
They're, uh, they're pushing, pushing dirt into the main roof today, getting ready for the concrete structure.
Yeah, and they're ready, they're going to start working on the curves and setting everything ready to be paved to the outside and then Friday for everything next four weeks.
Okay, they had, uh, they, they brick the sign up next to the driveway that comes, that runs between my building and the...
Yeah, that's the mock-up to, so like, how they make sure everything is installed correctly. So before they like install windows and stuff, they have to go sign off on that before they can actually just, I don't know, it's just a mock-up.
I wondered when they do. Interesting, seems like a lot of work.
B E is, is that a skip power steering?
Yeah, so it's one of those where you sign off on that little piece. That way, if something gets messed up on the building, you can go back and say, no, this is what it was supposed to look like. Or if we say, no, it was supposed to look like something, they say, we did it right here, just going to do it. You can do a small piece instead of a twenty-two thousand vertical thing.
Yeah. That is, that was a big, that was a big, you know, piece.
Real quick, um, got a shout-out from the Coleman family up on Crossley. Okay. They're both in their late nineties. Baldridge got a, a special kudos, uh, but I think they're both in, in nursing home care right now. Uh, I don't know if you know who that is yet or not.
I do, yeah.
Yeah. That's my cousin, my cousin's married to one of the boys, so, uh, they've had to transport the money a number of times, and, uh, very unique. times and very unique. I think he's not, he just turned 98.
That would be old times.
Yeah.
I didn't realize it was still.
Oh, yeah. He still was, he was mowing grass until about two months ago, three months ago, so. Great family. And she, she was very, very complimentary and thankful for our team, so I want to pass that along.
Thank you.
Very good. Anything else, Chief? And we have planning zoning. Seriously?
We have two things. The first one is to request that we have special assistance to get money back for cleaning up a property at Marion Drive and the mowing of a property that we just approved to go into the city. So I want to make sure I get that money before that process is through.
Yeah. Let's do that.
So that's Resolution 5549.
Is there a motion to approve 5549?
Some move.
Second.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yeah.
Mr. Mearsfall.
Yeah.
Mr. Wade.
Yeah.
5550?
Yeah, then my add-on is the property at Marion Drive, 3555 Marion Drive, today has yet again established another junk vehicle on their property in the form of a derby car. In July, we had to take some of their debris, their junk, they actually removed the vehicle. In September, they brought one in and brought it back out within a timeline that was faster than what we were able to get to them and address and disappeared this morning. We want to bring it as an add-on this evening. So if it does not go away, we will make it go away. This was never one of the ones we've looked at historically. So it is a new.
A new piece of junk?
Yes.
So motion to approve 5550?
Mr. Mearsfall.
Yeah.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yeah.
They're just going to continue to.
Well, I just, my son, it's, they're derby cars and they got to replace them eventually. They completely fall apart, I'll say.
They do, but you're good.
Yeah, I mean.
They could take them directly.
Piece by piece.
Well, I was, I was.
Probably. I'm just saying, that must be lucrative for them.
It's their fun hobby.
My nephew goes to Tennessee and I don't think they make any money. It's just the.
They have another location where they take them, when they're not on their property, they just don't want to get them out of the location, which I'm encouraging to not operate into this property. But they want to tweak stuff and go forward. I, I understand the desire for property, but this has been a pattern that we want to, you know, a different pattern for 2026.
Good luck. Anything else, Chief?
No, sir. Let's put different.
Milwaukee. Police Department may have a recommendation to accept a donation of $10,000 from the Springberry Eagles for the Fire Department's new drone.
Chief was invited, yeah, chief was invited to the Eagles last week to speak about the benefits and uses of drones and law enforcement, after which they offered a generous donation of $10,000 and wanted to publicly and officially express our gratitude.
So a motion to accept this donation of $10,000 from Springberry Eagles?
Some move.
Second. Mr. Gabbard.
Yeah.
Mr. Mearsfall.
Yeah.
Mr. Wade.
Yeah.
Please stay in motion.
Wrote the comments, just a consent agenda. Anything else, Matt?
No, not from the department. I was using a vacation license.
Probably not talking right now with them.
Student's driving semi.
Yeah.
Corner.
Sure he is. Anything else under new business? Okay, we have the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some move. Second.
Mr. Mearsfall.
Yeah.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yeah.
Mr. Wade.
Just a couple of things, I'll be real brief about it. So when I was in Washington, I got the opportunity to speak to Duke's liaison, government liaison, to replace Jim Abbott. And she had mentioned to me that the property that they bought on, I would say, Row 122 is used to beautify, is 22 acres. That parcel that's highlighted blew up on the screen there. So they've sat on it for the last few years, but she's indicated that Duke is getting ready to mobilize and building a substation down there. As we're all aware, the township doesn't have a whole lot of regulatory freedom utilities, but I will say this much, them investing a substation in this area, an expansion of one and putting one in, they can head for, they can increase the service delivery, reduce the outages and the time that it takes to deal with the outage. So just want to give the board a heads up that in getting faster purchase, I would say, probably we'll do something over the next couple of years. And they pre-assured us that they were going to pay attention to aesthetics and that kind of thing, try to be as available as they possibly can, realizing that a substation is desirable for. Has some good points. Yeah.
Yeah. She's been fantastic at parts, some of the things that I had.
Maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's been.
Yeah, she's real good.
She's a good fit to replace them, if she's available. I assume we want to do trick or treat from 6:00 to 8:00 on a Halloween night? We have to vote on, on the state of the target. And I will be talking to you in the coming days about some of the personnel changes for the now-created HR. That's all I have for today.
Anything else, anything?
I do not.